Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast in WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook, and our agenda contains a link to join the meeting via Zoom and also a telephone number in which to call in and likewise join via Zoom. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order and take a roll call of the zoning board. I, John Trefethan, am present.
I, Brian Forstall, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present, on Zoom.
I, Damian May, am present.
We had one other member present on Zoom, but I don't hear him. Try it again, Ryan.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present.
There we go. Thank you very much. Before we get underway, I just wanted to acknowledge that this weekend, a longtime Ashland resident and stellar member of the community, Rob Gonfrady, passed away. Rob, in his younger years, was a police officer who was shot and seriously injured on duty for the town of Ashland, went on to become chief of police in Ashland for more than 20 years. He and his wife Joan have been active members of the community ever since. Joan frequently observes our activities and participates in community discussion via Zoom, so our thoughts and sympathies go out to them. That being said, next item on the agenda is the public hearing on 167-169 Pleasant Street, special permit. This has been continued a couple of times, and this afternoon, we received another request from the applicant, James McDonald, seeking to continue this matter to not our next meeting, but the subsequent meeting July 22nd of 2025. We typically grant requests when they are requested, or extensions, rather, when they are requested. This is either the second or third request. Any discussion about whether or not to grant the request?
I might say we grant the request, but this would be the last time that we extend it.
Okay. Fellow board members, your thoughts on that? That sounds reasonable to me.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. You will recall that this was originally on, and we did have to open the hearing, and the applicant's plans that he submitted weren't adequate for us to make a decision, and we asked him to come back with new plans, and that is what we have been waiting for. So, Brian, would you like to make that a motion to continue the hearing to July 22nd, and that that would be the last request to continuance that we would grant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
I, Damian May, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. That makes it five to nothing, and that issue is closed for this evening. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is a continuance of a public hearing at 61 Waverly Street, a 40B comprehensive permit. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will reopen the public hearing to hear the petition from the Gutierrez Company requesting a comprehensive permit for Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of one multifamily five-story building containing 226 apartment units and 391 parking spaces. The property in question is located at 61 Waverly Street, Assessors Map 15, Lot 12, in the Ashland WMUSD, quote, capital D, close quote, parenthesis, Wildwood Mixed Use Special District, quote, capital D, close quote, zoning. Previous public meetings have been held with the hearing on March 25th, April 22nd, May 27th, June 10th, and now this evening, June 25th. When we were last before us on our last meeting, which was June 10th, the applicant's traffic engineer had submitted a response to our peer reviewers' first peer review report, and we were awaiting the response from our peer reviewer to the applicant's report. And also, we were awaiting a response on the civil engineering aspect of things that our peer reviewer had issued a second report, and there had been some miscommunication about getting the report to the applicant, and they promised that they would have a response in time for tonight's meeting. They submitted a large number of materials late last week, and today, the board received peer review report number three from our peer reviewer, Hancock Engineering. Rob Benedetto from Hancock is here tonight. That being said, why don't we start with the civil engineering aspect of things, because I think that's going to be simplest to address. Israel, if I may call you by your first name, if you want to come up to the stand, or the witness thing, I think you have to hit the microphone button there to make sure it's blinking.
Thank you. It is on, Mr. Chair.
And my understanding is that, and Rob, you can chip in on this as well, that the review of all of the materials that were submitted by the applicant were adequate responses to all the issues that you had raised, and that as far as Hancock is concerned, the project basically meets all of the requirements that Hancock found for the issuance of a comprehensive permit, if I've summarized that adequately?
Yes, that's correct. We had a discussion at the last week to discuss any outstanding comments. They supplied additional materials that answered, addressed those comments. We turned around and got our letter out as admittedly a little late, but we agree with the changes that they've made. So all of the outstanding comments have been addressed, and we conclude that the comprehensive permit application complies with the applicable Ashland bylaws and regulations.
Anything that you would like to add?
No, just other than I want to thank Becca Solomon for stepping in and helping to continue, facilitate the process, and, you know, get information and share information in a timely way during the transition. We appreciate that and appreciate all the work by the consultants.
Any questions from members of the board on the civil engineering aspect of the application?
Not for me.
Dan?
Nope, not for me.
Stu, Orion? Okay, very good. There is a two-part to their process tonight. The second has to do with traffic, and we did receive a supplemental peer review report from Bob Micho of MDM Transportation, our peer review consultant. Bob issued a report dated June 20th, 2025. He is here this evening. I understand there's a slideshow presentation that he is going to prepare, but Bob, why don't I turn it over to you to sort of take us through your response back in June 20th and where we're going?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Again, for the record, Robert Micho, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. Last we presented to the board, we've actually been able to engage directly with the applicant and their engineering team to discuss certain modifications to the site plan that are specific to access and how that might benefit the plan. They've since updated the site plan to reflect that conversation. As of June 20th, we've documented our, you know, final findings, and if someone would be so kind to bring up the presentation, yep, I'll walk the board through. This won't take too long. Most of our commentary relates to site access, most of which has been resolved. There are a couple of minor comments that I think are very addressable by the applicant. So we'll start with the first slide, really focusing in on the Waverly Street driveway. I had mentioned to the board at our prior hearing that it would be beneficial to allow egress as well as ingress from the Waverly Street quarter, because the bulk of traffic would be inclined to use Waverly Street from the east, and that would, in turn, if it were feasible, take a lot of pressure off of the East Union Street quarter and the signal itself, because you'd have a more direct means of getting to where you work or shop without having to use East Union Street. Based on the working session we've had, the applicant has in fact modified the driveway so that it does meet the applicable sightline criteria, so the location that we'll speak to in a moment is viable from that perspective, from a safety perspective as well as an operational perspective. The remaining questions relate to emergency vehicle access and how that would function in the current design, in that emergency apparatus would actually need to use the outbound lane, I'm sorry, the inbound lane for the site to exit the property. We'd want to solicit some input from the fire department to make sure that that's an acceptable operating parameter for them, and there may be a workaround. The reason that that condition exists in the current design is because of the presence of a utility pole, and so the relocation of that pole, if it were achieved, could probably address that issue. So the next slide really focuses on that driveway. I will note, and I'll speak to the other driveway in East Union Street in a moment. Really, the principal change in the site plan was that reorientation and redesign of the driveway, which in the next slide, as I indicated previously, does allow for proper visibility to vehicles that would be approaching the driveway from either travel direction on Waverly Street, as well as the ability for somebody leaving the site to properly see someone coming from either travel direction. Based on the 85th percentile speeds that were documented for Waverly Street, the applicable criteria are met. We did note that there may be a need for some vegetative clearing along that edge of, I guess it would be the southerly edge of Waverly Street, to ensure that that particular condition is met, and one of the reasons we've commented on including the sightline triangles on the site plan is to ensure that those are free and clear of any obstructions, and that's essentially what this diagram shows in purple, right? Those are the sightline triangles that would be available at that particular driveway. The next slide shows the swept path analysis that was presented to and within the property by the largest responding apparatus. This is the tower vehicle. The site is designed appropriately to accommodate all of the swept paths for that type of a larger vehicle, but you'll notice, and it's pointed with an arrow, that the driveway itself, because of the existence of that utility pole, has been designed with an island feature that would not allow that larger vehicle to directly exit the property from the departure lane, the exit lane of the driveway. They'd actually have to travel on the left side of the island to be able to return back to the fire station. That's physically possible, and certainly, in an emergency response scenario, that's a managed turn, if you will. This larger vehicle may in fact have its lights on and would be highly visible to anybody approaching the site, but we want to underscore that it's not traditional to have an emergency apparatus leave a site from the inbound lane. So we just want to make sure that the fire department is aware of that and offers advice on whether they're comfortable with it. The next slide actually is a more detailed swept path drawing that was provided that shows that movement on the left side of the island. We believe that if the utility pole were relocated from its current position and the island was either eliminated or reduced in size, that it may be possible to have a departure lane that is approximately 16 feet wide that would allow for that vehicle to be able to make the left turn without using the inbound lane. So that's a design feature that may need to change, and it's subject to further evaluation pending some input from the fire department. The next slide focuses on the East Union Street driveway. Our initial commentary requested that the applicant consider a driveway location that was east of the high school driveways to reduce the amount of conflicting volume that would occur on East Union Street. I mentioned earlier that the redesign of the Waverly driveway has taken most of that concern off the table, in that fewer than 20 vehicles per hour would be inclined to use East Union Street because of that redesign, and as a result, most of our concern or suggestion, if you will, to shift that driveway east was addressed with that design change. They've also incorporated a redesign of where the pedestrian crossing works that is now located to the east or the right side of the high school inbound driveway. That's a safer location that has fewer vehicle conflicts, so we appreciate that change and concur with it. And really, what we're left with is, you know, whether it's appropriate, given all of that, to have that more easterly design. The applicant has raised a concern that applicable sightlines may not be met or may be marginally met at that location. We also note, and this is the most significant factor, that if a driveway were placed east of the high school driveways, it would be in much closer alignment to the Waverly driveway, and as such, may be conducive to cut through traffic, either from the high school or from the neighborhood generally. And for that reason, more than anything, my opinion is that the retention of the driveway where it was originally proposed on East Union Street is appropriate. It does meet applicable safety-based standards and criteria and does not present a location that would have a significant impact to East Union Street, given the change in driveway design at Waverly Street. So the next slide kind of walks through that. This is a diagram of the sightlines that would be provided at that easterly, or I'm sorry, westerly driveway location, the originally proposed location for the driveway, so that meets all of the applicable standards and criteria. You'll notice, although it's in a very small scale here, that the pedestrian crosswalk is also shown on this drawing, just east of the driveway, so to the right of the driveway as is shown on this diagram was where that new crossing is located, which we believe is at the appropriate location. That will also be designed to include a rapid rectangular flashing beacon and RFB assembly for safety reasons, so that anyone using the crossing could push a button and alert approaching motorists that someone's about to use the crosswalk, standard design feature these days. Next slide indicates what the applicant has reviewed for the potential easterly location. Again, the conclusion being that we don't believe that that's necessarily an appropriate location. For any other reason than the potential that it might induce cut through traffic. Next slide really gets into other aspects of our review. One of those was parking. Parking is certainly adequate to support the use, but may in fact result in a surplus in actual demand. It is common for these types of projects in Ashland, as well as throughout the Commonwealth now, to provide parking ratios more in line with about one and a half spaces per unit. Empirical data and recent studies by Central Transportation Planning Staff and, I'm sorry, MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, have all indicated that providing parking in excess of that ratio typically results in a substantial surplus in parking that could otherwise be avoided. So really, the question we have and a suggestion is that the applicant may want to consider banking some portion of spaces, maybe not 60 spaces, but certainly some amount of spaces to bring that parking ratio more in line with what other projects of similar location and proximity are providing. And secondly, to consider and allocate specific spaces for transportation network company use. This is the package truck delivery, UPS, FedEx, Uber Eats, Uber Lyft, rideshare services, those types of things that would traditionally generate a demand of anywhere from two to four spaces over a typical peak period. As it relates to transportation demand management actions, the applicant has revised their TDM program from the original proposed. It now includes what I would call traditional elements, having a point of contact to disseminate information about area public transportation services, routes, schedules. They certainly have very good bicycle accommodation features within the property, and they do have specific areas that they've identified for tenant move-in and loading operations that we believe are appropriate and will be managed in a way that does not impede onsite traffic flow during any part of the day. What they have not included and are typically provided for projects like this would be unbundled parking. In other words, a separate charge for parking on the property that's separate from the lease of the actual unit that they'll be living in. It's called unbundled parking. That's something that's been discussed at other 40Bs here in Ashland, and that is a part of every other 40B project that we've reviewed or have been an advocate, a proponent for in the Commonwealth. Transit subsidy program is another component that is traditionally offered for projects like this, and what that really means is that there may be a way to incentivize new tenants to become familiar with public transportation systems in the area by offering a reimbursement of, say, a one-month T-pass or some aspect of incentive, what would you call it, a subsidy for a pass for that first month of occupancy. And I mentioned as well, the third bullet has to do with the short-term parking and making sure that that's properly identified and becomes a component of this TDM program. The applicant has proposed to conduct a monitoring program that's standard fare for projects like this these days, and really, the focus of the monitoring program would be twofold. One would be to measure the actual performance of the site relative to the projections in the traffic report, and that would typically happen at 80% occupancy of a facility so that we understand the actual total impact that the project has. And at that level, a comparison to the trips that were identified in the report can be made, you know, are the overall number of trips in line with what was expected, is the use of an individual driveway like Waverly Street in line with what we anticipated would occur, are illegal turns occurring? Those types of factors can be identified through that monitoring. So they're committed to doing that. We find that the parameters of that program are generally in line with what we would expect for a project like this. We are seeking some clarification, though, on the TDM annual monitoring. They've suggested that they, on an annual basis, will actually conduct a TDM survey of the tenants to determine the effectiveness of the TDM program. And to the extent trip generation for the site is much higher, 10% or more higher than what they predicted, that would be a trigger point for implementing or modifying the TDM program so that they can get more people to use alternative travel modes, for instance. Maybe it's increased subsidy, maybe it's some kind of a last mile connection to the T-station, et cetera. So we find that the monitoring program is generally acceptable with some minor modification. And I think there may be one last slide in here. Is that the, yeah. Site plan related comments, pretty minor. We do suggest modifying the geometry of the Waverly driveway to see if you could address the pole issue and the emergency vehicle egress issue, to the extent that's possible. There may be some minor adjustment to the geometry, the lane geometry itself. They are showing a 12-foot lane, for instance, departing the site. Traditionally, you'd want that to be somewhere closer to 16 feet, just for practical purposes. We've requested for the record, although I don't think it's going to result in a change to the site plan, auto-turn analysis of the dumpster and service loading areas to make sure that they're properly laid out and accessible without, you know, having aisles, adjacent aisles blocked, say, during a move-in process. We would request the sightline triangles that were shown in purple earlier be specifically shown on the site plan so that there's a clear record of the areas that vegetation and growth and obstructions can be maintained to ensure proper sightlines and appropriate notes to that effect added per our commentary in the letter. And finally, the TNC parking area, or at least spaces designated for that use, be shown specifically on the plan. And that's it. You know, we find that the applicant's been very responsive to our commentary, and we believe that at this point, they've substantially addressed all of our concerns.
Am I correct in saying that you haven't had a response from the most recent June 20th report?
No. I get, no, I have not. It's only been a couple of days. So I would expect that there might be one more round of back and forth here, but we believe that the nature of the comments that we've issued here are easily addressed.
Okay.
And we would be glad to issue a final confirmatory letter once that's happened.
Okay. But let me ask fellow board members if they have any questions of you at this point before I call upon the applicant's to respond. Brian, any questions? Mr. Micho?
Yeah. So the whole thing with getting out onto Waverly Street, there's a pole right where we want to do that. And so our thinking is that the best we can do right now is to get the fire truck to go in the incoming lane to go out. So we still need to check with the fire department to make sure that they're okay with that?
Yeah. I mean, look, there are other projects that are under review by the same board where four or five poles are being moved, right? So it's, it can be done. It costs money to do that. The design intent was to try to minimize the impact and need for moving poles like that, and the outcome of that process was the applicant is positioning to say, we don't need to move the pole so long as it's understood that a fire truck really needs to use that inbound lane. It's not ideal. You know, our preference would be to have a driveway design that allows for traditional egress from the site. The lane structure, as is currently proposed, is only 12 feet wide, is pretty narrow for a departure lane from a site like this. So traditionally, in So traditionally, in very similar circumstances, we would design no less than a 14-foot lane and traditionally a 16-foot lane departure, just to make it easier for folks to make turns into the, into the street.
And so if the poles were moved, you could get that additional width that you needed on that?
I believe that's the case. Certainly, the applicant would need to demonstrate that. But I think one of the constraints that the applicant was dealing with was drainage from the site, you know, and how that was going to work and where certain drainage features were located proximate to this driveway. So they've tried to thread the needle, if you will, between balancing the needs of the site from a drainage perspective and minimizing infrastructure cost and having to relocate poles. So I think if the pole were not an issue, I think there's sufficient area along the frontage where you may be able to entirely eliminate the island feature and get wider departure lane and allow for a more traditional move of a vehicle out of the site.
And so that would probably help everyone getting in and out of that, just sort of the way it's going to happen. And so that would help everyone generally getting in and out of that if that?
Yeah, I think it would. You know, I, we had early, very early on identified at a very conceptual level a potential location for, you know, some of the geometry. We had suggested in our assessment that perhaps an island feature wrapped around the pole may allow that pole to remain. When the applicant, subsequent to the working session we had, put pen to paper, I think their challenge was to try to identify and grade the site for drainage purposes in a way that worked around those design features and it became a balancing act. So their design is functional, but it can be improved and it can, at the same time, address that issue with the fire truck if that pole were relocated.
All right. And so you guys really don't want to move the pole, is that?
If I may?
Certainly.
Through Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Mishaw has done a very good job of kind of outlining the challenges and the complexity of that exit point. The one thing that I would point out is that the other entrance or accessway into the site along East Union Street does provide full ingress and egress, you know, in a correct fashion for the largest fire apparatus. So, and it may be very likely that that tower vehicle, when it comes out of the fire station, goes along East Union and accesses the site along East Union. So it comes in and out along East Union. So it's really only the one condition which would, so if they want to exit off of Waverly, they would have to exit as currently designed through the inbound lane, if you will. But the other access into the site provides normal ingress and egress for that vehicle. So I think we would look to, you know, discuss this with the fire department and see, you know, how they feel about that condition, and then we can respond. If necessary, we'll look at dealing with that utility pole.
I just usually take a look at things and I try to imagine what it would be like in 30 years if we look back. Would we kick ourselves for not moving the pole on day one? Or do we just, you know, leave it and then 30 years look back and say, boy, we should have moved? You know, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yep.
But I guess we can kick candy down the road and see what the fire department says.
Sounds like a meeting with the fire department is in order and we will work on that.
I have a couple of other, just.
I was going to call upon you after all the other board members have an opportunity to ask Mr. Mishaw questions.
Absolutely.
And then we'll get to you. Then after that, we'll have the public have an opportunity to ask questions as well. Brian, anything further? Dan, any questions?
Yes. So I think my biggest concerns are regarding the traffic volume on Waverly and really just taking in consideration the proposed other 40B projects, not only in Ashland, but also in Framingham, in the railroad crossings on Waverly, again, in Framingham and Ashland. And like Brian was saying, a five to 10-year outlook and kind of what that would look like. I didn't know if the traffic studies included any data that would, you know, incorporate these other 40B projects. Again, with two going in on the west side of the site and then all these other ones in Framingham along Waverly.
Yeah. So the, that was a comment that we had in our initial review that the applicant did respond to. They have, in fact, included the traffic for the Chestnut Street project. They've included for Sanctuary. They've actually looked at growth factors and trends regionally and local to here and are using what we believe is a conservative background growth, which accounts for the projects that are also being proposed in Framingham. So we're satisfied that their projection, which goes out seven years from where they filed the study, is appropriate and does appropriately account for that, for that growth in those specific projects.
Okay. And then in addition to that, would it make sense to try and encourage more traffic flow exiting on the Union Street exit, whether it be through signage or what have you? I just, with the high school over there, public safety, you know, I have concerns, you know, midday with emergency vehicles, you know, having to get to this location and just being jammed up. And again, concerns with the increased traffic flow over time.
So the, our initial commentary had to do with how traffic would likely be distributed regionally. You know, where people who live here are likely to go in the morning, come back in the evening. That's predominantly east of the site, right? It's Waverly Street to Fountain eventually. And so the change in the design for the Waverly driveway actually accommodates that predominant flow direction, either coming back as a left turn into the site or a right turn exiting. So for context, the peak direction of travel, typical hour in the morning, would have somewhere around 50 vehicles an hour making a right turn from the site, as an example, where the East Union Street driveway would accommodate anyone who wants to go to, say, the train station or points west, which is a much lower proportion of the trips. And under this proposal, that would correlate to about 12 vehicles an hour wanting to get to the signal to make a left turn. Now, there is a hairpin turn, the right turn to get on a Waverly from East Union. The Waverly driveway, the way that it's currently proposed by the applicant, allows folks who live here to avoid that hairpin. They can actually get directly to Waverly without having to go toward the signal, add volume to the signal, and have a difficult time making the right turn. So my opinion is that the design of the driveways as currently proposed optimizes how the site will work and it minimizes the impact of the signal. It minimizes the impacts that the project will have to the East Union Street quarter for reasons you point out. You know, you've got high school traffic there, you've got new drivers, you've got a lot of pedestrian activity going on. So favoring the Waverly driveway is a preference. We'd rather have people coming to or from directly from Waverly rather than East Union.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Stu, any questions to Mr. Mishaw?
Yes, I have several questions for Mr. Mishawed. Who would initiate the request for the potential relocation of the pole with the fire department? It sounds like you're saying that if the fire department wants it moved, that would end this kind of wishy-washy response with regard to the subject of the utility pole. So are, is someone going to, is the applicant plus Mishawed going to go to the fire department and request their input?
We're going to have the planning department coordinate a meeting between the chief, fire chief, and the applicant to discuss the issue.
So I think that's a better way of putting it, getting a definitive answer as opposed to all of these subjective thoughts with regard to the safety and, and I guess the bottom line is, Mr. Mishawed, what would you recommend as the gold standard solution to this problem?
Well, if the applicant were able to widen the outbound lane from what they're currently showing, which is only 12 feet wide, and retain the island that they're showing, I believe that they could achieve a more traditional design and still address the circulation needs of that fire truck, right? So that was the intent of our original recommendation. The constraints that the applicant has on the site have dictated that that outbound lane can't be any more than about 12 feet wide. It's constrained by how the site needs to be graded for drainage purposes. So to address that, my recommendation would be to simply eliminate the island altogether, relocate the pole, and have a traditional, you know, 30-foot-wide driveway throat or width, if you will, that tapers into a 24-foot-wide driveway. So that, that's what I would recommend if, if that pole remains a constraint. That, that's the more traditional design.
Thank you.
Brian, any questions?
Just one, and it doesn't relate as well to the fire truck entrance and exit. When we're talking about the tower truck, is that the largest apparatus that Ashland has or that would be part of a mutual, you know, cooperation response? Like we, I believe there was some discussion relative to one of the other projects we have about Framingham having a lot, even larger apparatus that they use for response on, on larger buildings. Is that, is that, are we accommodating that as well? Or is that the tower truck we're discussing?
It's a good question. So the mutual aid response, if it were required, would be coming from the Framingham side. The modeling is based currently solely on the tower vehicle that Ashland owns, not the tower that might potentially be used in a mutual aid response. So that, now, I believe, based on what I've reviewed, that the driveway layout would accommodate a larger vehicle, a larger tower than is currently shown. There is ample width and offsets from the path that they're showing for this Ashland vehicle that I'm comfortable and expect that if that modeling were redone with a slightly larger tower vehicle, and it wouldn't be that much larger, it'd probably be less than five feet larger, that it would still show the same result. But that's certainly something that the applicant could provide. I think it's appropriate just for the record. It's a good comment.
Thank you. That's all I had for questions.
Thank you, Brian. My questions have already been asked by others, so I won't duplicate them. Why don't we come back to you for a response and discussion about how we're going to proceed on the traffic issue?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think certainly we can go back and clarify and look at some of these remaining items with respect. I think many of them that Mr. Mishawed has brought up are things that we can incorporate into our response, the unbundling of parking to accommodate, you know, folks that may not need, have a need for parking. I think we're in agreement on the traffic demand measures that we're proposing to implement, and we can clarify that aspect of it. The, we've already designated a fairly generous area for short-term parking, be it for, you know, delivery vehicles, Uber Eats, that kind of thing. And we can clarify where those, or at least the number of those spaces to be provided so that that's more clear on the plan. So I think overall, we can go back and just tidy up some of these remaining open items. The one thing that may deserve some additional discussion is just on the parking count itself, the number, the amount of parking to be provided. Ashland's bylaw requires two spaces per unit, and we've tried to strike a balance between what's required in the bylaw, what our experience is, what we think is good practice. So we're currently showing 1.7 spaces per unit, which in our experience is adequate and appropriate for suburban projects of this type. Parking is the kind of thing where you want to make, we would have to put in the infrastructure to go in for the parking. So all the stormwater subsurface systems, we'd want to, even if we land banked some spaces, we'd want to make sure that if they ever were needed, that we would have designed the site appropriately to accommodate that amount of parking. So much of the infrastructure, if you will, that needs to be put in place would have to go in upfront anyway. And to go back in and add parking after the fact would be very disruptive. So it's the kind of thing you want to kind of get right, right out the gate, so you don't have to go back in and create after the fact. Having said that, we have updated our waiver request list to provide that flexibility so that we could land bank some spaces, and that's been included. I think the request was to land bank up to 15% of the spaces, which would take the parking ratio down. If we were not to build the 15%, it would take the parking ratio down to about 1.5 spaces, maybe just under 1.5. So I think our approach is to build that flexibility into the conditions, if you will, but our preference is to probably land somewhere around the 1.7 parking spaces that we've currently proposed. But in terms of next steps, we can go back and provide some updates to the materials that we've submitted thus far and certainly coordinate with the planning department and meet with the fire department between now and the next hearing.
Our next scheduled meeting would be July 8th. Would that be adequate time to do that?
I believe so.
Okay. Why don't we then allow public comment on the issues that we've talked about tonight with this applicant? If you're on Zoom and wish to be heard, raise your, the hand that you can. And if you're here in person in the audience and wish to be heard, please line up along the side of the wall, and Becca will coordinate people from on Zoom. So why don't we start with someone who's here in person?
Hello, Paul Kendall, 6 Rebenak Road. I am a member of the school committee, but just speaking as an individual. So regarding the location and the traffic patterns on to East Union, I would highly recommend that making that, at least during the morning hours, a right turn only, if you put a sign up for that, because a left turn there in the morning is going to be a complete disaster. It backs up quite a little ways coming in, trying to take a right there. And as somebody pointed out, we do have a lot of young, new drivers. And so people trying to get out there, causing a big backup inside the site, I think, trying to say, if you're going right up there, and then if you want to go the other direction, go down on Waverly, would probably be a good idea because if you ever go there in the morning, it's, it's a complete disaster. I wouldn't recommend where that is, trying to take a left at all. Another thing, when we're adding this much traffic to West Union or East Union, if you talked about the crossing late there, we do have another cross, area that we cross down by Nicky Ave, Nicky Road, and maybe if they would be willing to think about putting one down there as well. So we have students that walk down there and cross. So when we have more, more traffic here, having that would be, I think, a benefit as well. And I apologize if you covered this at a meeting I wasn't able to attend, but when it comes to parking and snow storage, your snow storage are parking spots. So two questions. If you think you need less than their bylaw, but you're using them for snow storage, how does that work? And if you're using parking spots for snow storage, logistically, how does that work? You said, I'm going to use these spots for snow storage. How do you, you make sure? How do you, you make sure that you coordinate off two days in advance? So nobody's, how does that work? So I'm really concerned about snow storage, particularly when you're going to only use parking, and you're going to then say, hey, we're going to go less than the bylaw. Right? So I don't, I don't know how that's going to work, both logistically and just practically with the number of spaces. And you need to accommodate the fact that when it snows, your parking lot's going to be full. Right? It's, it's not a business where nobody's there. It's everybody staying home from work. So those are the, those are the points. So if, if you would consider potentially adding another crosswalk indicator down, down the road, I think that would be helpful. And potentially making that a right-hand turn, I think, would be a, a good idea as well, if you're keeping the, the road there. So, thank you.
Becker, anybody online? Okay, then why don't you allow him to speak?
Hello, this is Richard James, 19 Tider Lane. I have a couple of questions. First, to piggyback on the crossing. I am actually one street down, and we have quite a few younger children, and there is no crosswalk. We were told that we could not get a crosswalk cut. And with all the added traffic, it is going to be extremely hard for our children to actually get to school when they do become high school age, as well as if you're trying to get out of our area towards Cedar Street after 7:00, 7:15 in the morning, it is pretty much impossible. And you're asking that we're going to be putting that many more cars on the road. Do we have plans in place to look at a traffic study further down East Union, and most especially at Cedar Street, which is an even bigger problem than East Union at this point?
My knowledge, there are no plans to do a traffic study that includes the Cedar Street intersection, are there?
No, that, and thank you for that question. That's a question that came up, I believe, at the first hearing as well. And what I would say is that I, I think we understand, I, I lived very close to Cedar Street years ago, for about 12 years, actually. So I understand what you're saying. When you look at the impact of this project, the way that a study area is defined is on the basis of the percent change, the relative percent change a project might have. And the, and the rule of thumb here is that a project that changes or increases volume by more than 5% is considered a project that has a potential material impact, that should be evaluated, quantified, studied. The number of trips that this project is likely to add to the Cedar Street area, points east on East Union Street, falls well within, below that 5%. It's, it's on the order of 1% or 2%. So while it's quantifiable, it's not going to materially change traffic flow in that area. So it was not included in the study area. We don't find, on an industry standard basis, that it's necessary to study those locations for that reason. I'm not dismissing the fact that there's a lot of traffic there today. There are a lot of neighborhoods that use East Union Street in that area, and Cedar Street in particular. So, but the relative impact of the project doesn't justify that they be studied in detail by this applicant for that reason.
It seems as though with the schools, that any significant increase in, in traffic is, is time limited, so that for a certain period of time, an hour, hour and a half in the morning, and then in the afternoon, there can be a significant increase, whereas for the rest of the day, the increase is not that significant. Is that taken into account with the studies?
It is. So the applicant conducted automatic traffic recorder counts that quantify the hourly flow conditions over an entire day, so that you can identify those hours where school has a peak level of activity. The morning coincides with the commuter periods, right? So folks who are going to work in the morning are likely to have to travel at the same time that school buses and, and students are on the road. And that's been quantified in the, in the study. The afternoon peak tends to happen earlier in the afternoon, between 2:00 and 3:00, 3:30, when the site has a residential use, is generating the lowest activity it can during the day. So it's, it's a simple way of saying that the, the combined traffic impact of the project and adjacent street has been appropriately accounted for in the study. That occurs between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, and 4:00 and 6:00 at night. Those are the hours when the highest level of combined traffic occurs and, and serves as the basis of the study and the analysis. At 2:00, 2:30 in the afternoon, 3 o'clock, the high school may very well be pumping out a lot of volume, but the site itself is not. And so the, the combined impact of the project during that time period is less than it is between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. So the study did take those factors into account, and it's appropriately analyzed. Okay.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, one more thing. Cedar Street exit is going to be pretty much the only way south, if you're not going on 495. And as of right now, that Shaw's Plaza is the only way out of, out of the area towards points south for commuters. I would highly recommend looking into doing right turn only, period, no timeframe for the East Union exit, because they're going to be going one way with that right turn only, and there are another right turn only going down 135, alleviating a lot of the traffic issues.
Okay, thank you. Next, sir. We've got three people lined up that will cut off public comment after the third person.
Arthur Johnson, 4 Roberts Road. Just before I ask my traffic question, did we have open comment for this civil engineering? Or was that not?
I'm sorry, didn't hear what you said.
The civil engineering portion last?
All of that, all of that's included in this.
Okay, so I have one question on that.
You can comment on that, as well as traffic.
Okay, thank you. So last week, when we were talking about the storm drainage in the culvert under Waverly Street, what I was talking about was this, the ledge that's further down, where the water comes out of there, and that's freezing over. So is that going, is that part of the plan, getting the water away from that ledge, so it doesn't come out through the street there? Okay, okay. So then the other thing is the traffic, on the traffic side, any sidewalk, if they're talking, telling people to take bicycles and everything. My brother was hit by a car on Waverly Street. You know, the bike lane is this much, it's very narrow, there's no sidewalks. So if they're going to be putting all these hundreds of people in there, and the people are going to be walking around, and if they're walking on 135, it's very dangerous, there's been a lot of accidents. So I, I think that's something that we got to consider, putting any sidewalks.
Thank you.
Hi, Tricia Kendall, 6 Rebenaker Road. I am the current chair of the Ashland Planning Board, but I am speaking as an individual here. One term, I just wanted to understand TD, TDM? That you were, is that traffic demand?
Sorry, Transportation Demand Management.
Management. Can you just explain that term briefly?
Yes. So the, the premise of TDM is that there are alternative means of getting from point A to point B, right? So traditionally, that people think of travel as being in an automobile, very auto-centric society. Because there's the presence of public transportation, the T is not that far away, sidewalk systems and the ability to walk places instead of having to get into a car to do so, unbundling parking and disincentivizing car ownership, all of those become components of TDM. And the, and the goal is to provide options for folks to use alternative means of getting from point A to point B. So that's essentially what that means. And, and, and ways to encourage that would include things like transit subsidies. If someone's offered a financial incentive to try the train instead of getting in their car, then great. That might be one way that folks become aware of public transportation, how it functions, and maybe they use it more often.
And, and were you assigning a number to that?
No, no. But traditionally, in a suburban location like this, an effective TDM program would result potentially in a, in a reduction of 5%, maybe 10% of traffic volumes.
Okay.
With, then, when compared without it.
Okay, so it's more like a program, a description, rather than a, a number that you assign to something?
Correct, yeah. So in, in environmental filings at the state level, which this project is not subject to, the, the, the rule of thumb for TDM programs would be about, I think, an average is a 4% reduction in trip generation.
Okay, thank you. And I, I just also wanted to just add a nuance to the right turn only onto East Union from the development in terms of the high school. Not only do we come out in that Cedar Street traffic, but we have two teens at the high school, so we know this routine well. And what happens is that as, as cars come up East Union to get to the high school from downtown, they're going to be turning right into the high school, that's easy. And what happens there with the system is, is that people will pause there to let people coming the other way make a left into the high school. And so it concerns me a little bit that if people are waiting to turn left onto East Union, there's going to be some confusion of the people trying to be nice to, to let people into the high school, because two people are going to be turning, trying to turn left at once. Someone coming out of the new housing and someone trying to turn into the high school could be looking at that gesture as, as pause, someone is pausing to let that left turn happen. Traditionally, we know it's, it's to allow people to get to the high school, but someone might take the opportunity, if, if they're allowed a left turn out of there, to get onto East Union going left. And so I just wanted to explain that little kind of nuance, nuance of how that traffic works during the busy times for the school. Right, thank you.
Mr. DeSoni.
Evening, Mark DeSoni, 119 Main Street. I have a couple of questions to ask. The design of the two driveways, one Waverly, one East Union, was there any, any idea in the beginnings to put a long driveway from end to end ever thought of?
Well, I think the, that was not considered, because the concern was that it would just present a straight drive-through for people to cut from East Union onto, onto Waverly, or vice versa. And the idea is not to create a, basically another road through there, but it's a parking lot for a residential building.
Okay, I'll bring that up, because if there's a emergency, fire emergency on East Union, it would be easier to come up the hill of East Union for that entrance. And if there's anything on the Waverly Street, it would be the same thing for coming up there. And if it's in the middle, there could be a continuation drive your direction. Okay, that's one. The traffic itself on Waverly Street can be, can be an interest in reset if it's not busy. What would the traffic study consider busy time on Waverly Street?
Well, I, Mr. Michaud, can you respond to that?
The highest traffic activity is, is associated with the commuter periods. So that's between 7:00 and 9:00, 9:00 in the morning, 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening. It, it's slightly less than that during the middle of the day, but it varies depending on whether the high school is releasing or not. So the 7:00 to 9:00, 4:00 to 6:00.
And for the same question for East Union Street, if they're just going to the T station, what's the highest rate for that?
I think East Union Street has similar trends in terms of the peaks. But again, at, at mid-afternoon hours, you're going to have a spike in activity because of the recent, release of the high school. So it's a little bit different than Waverly Street, but the, the highest volumes on East Union are still going to be, you know, those commuter periods.
I'll, I'll bring it down to the non-high school. People are going to work those times on both roads without school involvement. Is there any percentage?
7:00 to 9:00.
Percentage, could you clarify what you're?
Mark, you talked about the busiest times in the street of 4:00 to 6:00 and 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning.
Yeah, but I'm not going to include, I'm not including the high school traffic.
Well, that didn't, that included the high school traffic, because?
But I'm not including that.
The high school traffic is when it is, and it sometimes somehow equals, occurs at the same time as the commuter traffic, so.
But the commuter traffic, high school kids at the same time, are not taking the T.
I don't, what, what's your point? Where, where are we going with this?
Where are we going with this? The people who go to work after dropping off this, their children at the high school commute to the T station. But this, on Waverly Street, they're not even on the same side as the high school, and they go straight to, to, on the T station from Waverly Street, without high school kids. So I'm saying, after, after the drop-off of, of the kids in high school side and Waverly Street, there's got to be a percentage of people commuting to the T, to the T station, which is off a 135, the Memorial Drive side. Yes or no?
I find it hard to believe it would be a significant number.
I, I haven't taken the time to calculate that. You know, I, I think clearly, you know, there, there's a percentage of volume on Waverly Street that's destined to the T station. You know, so we, we know that. I haven't calculated what that actual number is. There is data from Memorial Drive that we could look at, so that number can be estimated, but we haven't, we haven't calculated that for, for Waverly Street.
So you haven't calculated that for Waverly?
Mark, we need to wrap it up.
I will. Nor East Union Street. But you include in the high school, which can be an artificial number if there's people driving past the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, why don't you step up to the mic, and we'll coordinate what we're going to, what we're going to do. As I said, our next meeting is scheduled to be July 8th. We're going to come back and discuss the additional traffic issues. In the meantime, we're going to have our planning department coordinate with you in a meeting with our fire chief to go over the, the distances and whether the fire trucks can maneuver the way they're going to need to maneuver, or whether we need to do something else. I think that was, that was it. I know you submitted a lot of plans on the civil engineering side, where our peer reviewer has sort of signed off on them. They just came into us late last week, and we haven't frankly had a time to study them. There may be some questions arising out of that, and after we also get the chance to review our peer reviewer's third and final report. So I think that probably will give us enough to have a, a productive meeting.
Great, and the one additional thought with respect to the exit off of Waverly is we will go back, as Mr. Michaud suggested, and just take a look at whether we can accommodate that geometry on the right side of the utility pole. And if we can accommodate that, then I think it solves the issue. And then maybe we, then, then there's no need to.
That would be helpful.
So we'll also take a look at that quickly over the next, between now and the next hearing. And if, well, we determine that that's not going to work, then we'll certainly move forward with the coordination with the fire department.
Okay. Everybody all set? Do we have a motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, July 8th at 7:00 p.m.?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second to that motion?
Aye, John Trafethan vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Thank you. This matter stands continued until? This matter stands continued until Tuesday, July 8th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everybody. And while we're waiting for these folks to clear out and the next group to come in, in my rush to get the meeting started this evening, I neglected to introduce who is sitting with us tonight, and of all nights, it was most important that I introduce somebody. Having just joined the planning department this week, we are joined by Jasmine Farinachi, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, who's sitting with us. We have Becca Solomon, our Conservation Agent, who in the past two months has been providing yeoman service with our planner and assistant planner, leaving in not only doing her regular job, but also assisting the planning department in getting all of the paperwork coordinated, distributed, et cetera, and running the computer that people are seeing up on the screen, and we very much thank her. And last, but certainly not least, we have Brian Winner from Town Council's office joining us as well. So my apologies to those folks for not introducing them at the beginning of our meeting. Okay, I think we're ready for Mr. Engler and his group. I'm going to take, Whacka, can we have just a five-minute recess?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome back to the June 24th, 2025 meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. Having taken a brief recess to allow the members from the previous hearing and the audience members to leave, and for the next hearing folks to come in, we are now ready to resume. And the hearing that we are going to resume with is a 40B comprehensive permit for 10-60 Main Street. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will reopen the public hearing to hear the petition from SLV Ashland LLC requesting a comprehensive permit per Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of two multifamily-story buildings with 250 apartment units and 337 concealed podium parking spaces. The applicant also proposed to restore and convert the northernmost Mills, 7,500 square feet, into commercial and retail space, some of it open to the public. The property in question is located at 10-60 Main Street, Assessors Map 14, Lot 128, in the Ashland Overlay Downtown District A, parentheses ADD-A, close parenthesis, and industrial base zoning. Public meeting has been held on this matter previously, first on January 7th, 2025, February 11th, 2025, March 11th, 2025, although the matter was not discussed, March 25th, April 8th, May 13th, May 27th, June 10th, and again here tonight on June 24th. So, first order on this is to acknowledge that we received a letter from the applicant, SLV Ashland LLC, dated June 23rd, 2025, consenting to an extension of the public hearing process until September 2nd, 2025, under 760 CMA 56.05, parenthesis 3, to close the public hearing process for this application, and that they are not, would not consider the hearing to have been unduly delayed by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and for that, we thank the applicant for that. I think we're making progress, and this should give us ample opportunity to finish, finish the public hearing and close it before we enter into discussion. So thank you. And if you don't mind getting up to the podium, we can perhaps talk about where we're going to go from there. When we were here last, there were, there was an issue that was left open. Our counsel, Attorney Winner, had read several questions and then provided a written copy of those questions to you, and the applicant was going to respond promptly, and they have done so. I'm going to turn this part of it over to Attorney Winner to talk about that and perhaps how we can, we can proceed from there.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's all accurate. I wrote up those questions and forwarded them by email, and they were responded to, and I assume that response has been made part of the record, and the board members have that as well, that's correct?
That's correct.
And it's up on the website. And so I think with respect to the substantive responses from the applicant, this is an opportunity for the folks that were concerned with those particular topics to review that and comment if they feel comments are warranted on any of those responses. Some of them had to do with the condition of the bridge, others had to do with other traffic concerns and things like that, and so now we have the applicant's written response. And if people who are, you know, have concerns in those fields feel that any further comment is warranted, or that the board should be aware of any additional, you know, questions, concerns, criticisms, et cetera, now would be the time for them to provide that to the board, so that we can hear that and be aware of it, take notice of it. But also, if there are any follow-up questions that the board feels are appropriate to ask the applicant, we need to get a chance to consider that as well. I think the applicant's response was, was comprehensive with respect to each of the questions. They were answered. Whether or not the askers of those questions are satisfied with the answer, that's what we need to hear on a board level, so that you guys can decide whether or not, if there's any follow-up with the applicant, or any questions you want to endorse and pass on. So I think that would be the next step in follow-up from, from my list of questions.
Okay, very good. To my knowledge, the ZBA has not received comments or further questions from, from anyone concerning those questions that were asked in the response from the applicant. I would concur that the applicant's response was fairly detailed and submitted in a very timely fashion. What I would propose, I don't think we need to hear from Mr. Engler this evening in response to this, apart from the written response, he's already submitted to the record, but allow the public some additional time to respond to the board, and then for the board to decide what it may wish to do with those responses. But unless we hear further from, from folks, as far as I'm concerned, I can't speak for the other members of the board, the questions have been asked and answered, and we will move on from there. Is that to your satisfaction, Mr. Engler?
Yeah, it is. For the record, Jeff Engler, the applicant from SLV Ashland. Yeah, we appreciated counsel communicating those verbally at the last hearing, and then providing them in writing, and I appreciate your perspective that the answers were comprehensive. We would agree with that, and frankly, a lot of the questions, I think we had already answered, but we referenced where anybody could find those submittals that have happened over the course of the public hearing. So, listen, I granted an extension, so there's time. If people have follow-up questions to any of that, we're not going anywhere, so we'll be happy to answer it, but hopefully it brings closure to some of those outstanding issues. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Counselor Winner.
Okay, very good. Moving on then, the item that, I think, next item of significant importance was, the applicant was looking for guidance from the ZBA concerning the Myrtle Street Drive and what was going to be, to be done with that. The, by way of history, the original design showed a 200-foot sight distance coming out of, coming out of the Myrtle Street Drive entrance. Through design work, and with our peer reviewer, Mr. Mishaw, it was tweaked a bit, so it was up to 220 feet with the sight distance. Apparently, 200 feet is the, sort of the industry standard, and 220 feet gave us more than the industry standard, and allowed for construction of a design of a fully circular park down in the parking lot by the proposed restaurant, et cetera.
Yeah, yes, again, for the record, Robert Mishaw, MDM Transportation Consultants. You've correctly characterized the sightline issue. The minimum standard that should be applied is based on what's called the 85th percentile measured speed. And in this instance, that minimum standard is 200 feet. Where feasible, it's always advisable to provide sightlines in excess of the minimum standard. And that has to do with the fact that folks do travel faster than the 85th percentile speed, and having that cushion is preferable where it's feasible. And our working with the applicant in reviewing their materials, they've made geometric changes to the layout of the driveway that allows a driver to achieve a sightline that is at least 220 feet distant from an approaching vehicle. So in our opinion, that, that's acceptable. That's, that meets an acceptable safety standard. The question becomes whether additional sightline can be achieved and at what cost? What are the trade-offs of doing that? And really, I think the quandary and the offer by the applicant has been that they're able to provide additional sightline at that driveway at the cost of reducing the size of the park space that they're proposing within, within the property. And the secondary impact of that would also be the elimination of additional planted material along that corner of where Main Street becomes Myrtle Street. So really, at some point, it becomes a subjective matter of a trade-off between a more comfortable, longer sightline that would afford a higher level of safety, if you will, and convenience and comfort, driver comfort. If you're leaving the driveway, it will be a more comfortable experience to have more sightline, essentially what you'd be doing, at the cost of having a smaller park space. So it becomes a subjective discussion of the trade-offs between the desire to have park space and the, the comfort level that motorists would have using the driveway.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on that?
By all means.
Uh, thank you. I mean, I appreciate Mr. Mishaw's assessment, and I frankly agree with it, but it's more than just the park space. I mean, that's quantifiable, but the whole orientation of that side of the property is going to be pretty crappy to provide that in terms of how it's graded, how it orients to Myrtle Street and Main Street, the street trees, so it's not just a couple thousand feet of amenity space that is going to be lost, which is significant, which ironically is what the Board of Selectment asked us to provide, but the whole site and the orientation and the presence is way worse. Now, can we do it? Yeah, we can do it, but, and, and one thing I threw the chair, I would ask Mr. Mishaw, and it got brought up at the last hearing, is somehow there's a characterization that the 220 is not safe. It is safe. 290 obviously affords more buffer, but I would ask through the chair to ask Mr. Mishaw, and I think he's kind of said this already, but 200 is the minimum. We've already redesigned the whole thing to get to 220. The, the 220 is safe. It's more than the minimum. So, but there was this characterization that the town is somehow making a trade-off between a safe or an unsafe. They're both safe. The 290 affords a little bit more sight distance, which we think is unnecessary and at great expense to the plan, which we think is much better and much more consistent with what the town actually wants. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Well, I think, you know, that, I think our, our understanding, we never, I don't think anybody on the ZBA was making the presentation that 220 feet wasn't safe. The question, obviously, if 220 is safe, is 290 safer? The answer may be yes, and as you said, but at what cost, and what public amenity people could receive from this project. I understand that obviously for you folks to proceed with drawings and whatnot, you need guidance from the board as far as where we're leaning. We're not in a position to, to vote yes or no on something, but to give guidance on what we would perhaps prefer to see is... to see is what I would hope that we might be able to get this evening from the five board members, and also hear from the public on what they would like to see. Because as Mr. Engler said, this is a project that is, although it's the Myrtle Street Drive, it's Main Street, and it's going to be front and center for people to drive by it. And there are really no public amenities, other than a proposed restaurant, for the public to visit the site and to use. And the question is whether the 220-foot sufficient. The developer has provided a design that shows the distance of Plan A, he refers to as the 220-foot sight distance. Plan B is a 290 sight difference, and he's outlined what the differences would be as far as the public plaza, et cetera. So that's what I, I'd like the board members to talk about, but perhaps before we do, it would behoove us to hear from members of the public on this particular issue. And normally I wait till we sort of get to the end, and they can ask questions or talk about all of it. Let's focus for the moment on, on this one issue, and open it up for public comment on what they would like to see, which would be the options. There are 220-foot sight distance, which would allow, according to their design, a full, what is called a public park, and also a public space larger supporting large social gatherings, et cetera, sort of a pocket, pocket park, excuse me, and also increased landscaping for the 290 sight distance, which would reduce the available size of the pocket park, the landscaping, et cetera. So that being, yes, Mr. Engler?
No, I was just-
Oh, okay.
At the podium.
I thought I maybe had not characterized things accurately. That being said, if anybody in the public, either in person or on Zoom, wishes to be heard, and we have up on the screen now the, the Plan A, Plan B, for purposes of discussion. And Becca, once again, I would ask if anybody online wishes to be heard, for you to let them in, but we have somebody standing up along the side of the wall, so we'll go to her first.
Thank you. Tricia Kendall, 6 Rebenaker Road. And I believe the applicant, I don't know if you were able to answer, Mr. Michaud, about the 220, if that, in your professional opinion, is, is beyond the standard at, at this location and would therefore be acceptable?
To be, to be clear, the, the sightline needs to be at least 200 feet long. They're providing 220 feet, so it clearly meets the safety, the underlying minimum safety-based standards. In fact, it slightly exceeds them. The 290, anything beyond 220 feet is, is, is beneficial but not necessary for safety reasons.
It seems like a big jump between 220 and 290. I hadn't been on the first part of that discussion, but it seems like a, a big jump. Have there been, and maybe this was part of earlier conversations, I apologize, but has there been a lot of, are the police worried, police reports about accidents in this area now with that kind of, with the view that we have? Is this corner particularly dangerous now? I don't know if we have any of that data?
Through the chair. The driveway today is very lightly used. There are no, the, the crash experience in that area does not suggest that that driveway specifically is unsafe, but at the same time, it, it's very lightly used, right?
Right.
Under this proposal, there'll be a substantial increase in the amount of folks who use that driveway, many of whom will be, you know, perhaps familiar with the site, but that, that's where the restaurant and retail uses will most likely be accessed. The park will be accessed from that side. So you're going to have a lot of folks who are using that driveway who may or may not be familiar with that particular stretch. And, and so the redesign of the driveway really, it enhances what's there today substantially. There's a guardrail section there today, there's a fence there, there's vegetation, there's a lot of things that obscure the visibility to that driveway today. Because of the increase in intensity of use, and, and based on the types of users, public, restaurant, retail, residential, we want to ensure that you at least meet that 200-foot standard. They've gone above that. We're comfortable with that for safety reasons. Anything beyond that becomes a trade-off between what the town, quite frankly, would like to see versus what those standards require at a minimum be provided.
Yeah, I understood. And I, I think it's, from my perspective, again, kind of watching this project from the planning board perspective, though speaking as an individual, I do think it's really important for this corner to have public amenities for, to have the greenery to kind of soften the edge of this project in town. And so, again, speaking as an, as an individual, I think I'm comfortable with the, the 220 standard. There may be, there may be something in the middle, or a, a little bit, you know, smaller tweaks that can be made along the way, but I would be hesitant to give up the public, the amenities and the greenery that's available to, to the public. Thank you.
Becca, anybody online that wishes to speak? Okay, why don't we open it up for Ms. Bennett?
Thank you, Claudia Bennett, 9 Sandstone Way. Yeah, I was just kind of, I think Mrs. Kendall touched upon this, and I'd just be interested in just hearing what the police might have to say about it.
I'm sorry, I don't think we heard your question, Claudia.
Be interested in hearing what the police would have to say about it?
We haven't received any comments from the police that I'm aware of.
Yeah, but maybe we could just ask for their opinion.
Oh, I, I don't think the police are here tonight.
No, I, I understand. I'm just saying, would this be something that maybe we should just get their opinion on? I, I realize that they might not be there tonight, but, but that might be-
There was a, a team meeting at the very beginning of this project where all of the town departments were invited to meet, and I know they, they did meet, and they met with Mr. Michaud, because I was, I participated in one of those meetings, and I do believe the police chief participated. And that's when the plan only called for 200 feet, not 220. And it was cause to the applicant's attention, and that's why it was revised to go up to the 220, because our traffic team felt that the 200-foot was not adequate to protect the public.
Yeah, I, I do remember the meeting.
So-
Okay, I was just looking for somebody, you know, for, that might have more knowledge about this kind, kind of thing, and what their opinion was on it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. DeSoni?
Okay, Mark DeSoni, 19 Main Street. I'm looking at the plan that's in front of me, and if I had a vote, I'd be saying, I'd be going with the Plan B, the 290, for safety more than landscaping, because this is going to be coming out to get onto Main Street, either way, going to Main Street or Myrtle Street. And landscaping, there'd be people being, staying in the landscape in the pocket park there, and not driving out. So my question would be, between 220 and 290, if I can go through, I'm, I might have to ask the traffic consultant through the chairman. Between that 70 feet, what does that do with the traffic count?
Through the chair, I'm not sure I quite understand the question. The, the traffic volumes wouldn't change. I, I think what, maybe if you rephrased it, I, I think, are you looking for an understanding of how, what benefits one plan has over the other?
No, I'm not looking for benefits. There's going to be a, coming out on the 291, to Main, to Myrtle Street, Main Street, going towards Main Street, that right, that left turn. But there's going to be waiting for traffic to go by coming out Myrtle Street, towards Main Street, but they gotta wait. Myrtle Street will have traffic on coming before it gets to the turn. And you add cars coming out of that exit. The, yeah, the arrival experience feels empty. What does that mean?
I, I don't think that's a traffic question.
I cannot understand it's not a traffic, because, because there is traffic, and it's not going to be empty. I'm just wondering out loud and seeing, because I see traffic all day long where I live, that it's, it's going to be a continuous, but not, not overflow, not mass pike bad and all that stuff, but it's still going to have cars going back and forth, coming from and going to. So at the corner, is that, is it still going to be close to Pleasant Street Crossing?
The design under either scenario would have clear visibility to the existing crosswalk that's placed in a way that's highly visible, either from Myrtle Street or Main Street. So there's no difference in your ability to see the crossing in the corner under either of these plans. And your visibility to any traffic that's coming out of the driveway is sufficient to be able to safely navigate that stretch of road.
Okay, so be safely, okay, which brings me over to the 220 sightline. Is the public spaces larger? What if people are coming off of Myrtle Street to go into it, into the entrance to the park?
The left turn in?
Yes.
Those vehicles would, would be clearly visible as well from Main Street traffic approaching.
And last thing would be the, the Pleasant Street Crossing, at the end of Pleasant Street, across to that, to that site. Is there going to be a crosswalk in that area?
Mark, that goes beyond this development. That's a public street, and I don't think that's part of what our discussion tonight involved.
So I'm just looking, I'm, then I bring it down to, I conclude-
You need to wrap up, Mark, okay?
I conclude that between 220 and 290, 70 feet, there will be traffic, no matter if it's either one of the lesser or the more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Someone online next, Becca?
Hello, my name is Amanda Walsh, Pine Hill Road. I think maybe there's a middle ground here where the sightline can be slightly increased without sacrificing the design of the front of the building. With this being downtown, it would be nice to have nice landscaping and think that, you know, if we do go with Plan B, it would take away from the downtown vibe and what we're, you know, looking to go with. I'm wondering if maybe the retaining wall can be made into a living wall or a landscaped wall, so that way, if maybe we go with a mix of Plan A and Plan B, it's still an experience. But in my opinion, I don't like Plan B. I think it defeats the purpose of having the pocket park, but I understand everyone's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. You're next.
Paul Kendall, 6 Rebenaker Road. And just to clarify, right now, we're only talking about this sightline thing, and we'll have an opportunity to speak in general about this traffic patterns afterwards, or we're both now?
I mean, we're talking just simply about the sightline thing at the moment, and at the end of the evening, we can open it up for further questions.
Great, thanks. Plan A, I mean, 220 is, is sufficient, be sufficient if we want to add potentially some kind of signage at the, you know, beginning of that corner to indicate that there's a blind drive, or whatever the right thing is to help control that speed a little bit. You know, we do, this has been a hot project for a long time, right? And a lot of people have a lot of passionate things about this. Plan B takes away some of those things that are making this more palatable for a lot of people. So 220 seems, seems sufficient. There's probably other mitigations that we can look into, like, again, signage or something like that. That, so just to put a point on it, my, my vote would be Plan A. I think you're still retaining that stuff, and, and, you know, it's, it's certainly a better, a better situation than we have today. Yes, it's lightly used, but if we look back at incidences, there would be some incidences, even with a lightly used thing, if, if we don't look back and see, see that, that there's no indication that something that is inherently better at 220 would result in any kind of increase in likelihood of any incidences or anything like that. So I would, I would definitely go with Plan A. Thank you.
Thank you. And this will conclude the public comment on this subject. Sir, you're the last one.
Oh, okay. Alex Keifer, Pine Hill Road. I, I see both arguments here. I see what Mr. Engler is trying to accomplish with the green space. I think with regards to just that curve of what's going on there, if we do a, a mix between the 220 and the 290, I think that would be sufficient. I have seen as early as yesterday, car came around quick, one of the dump trucks was pulling out of the facility, that car didn't see him, they slammed on the brakes. I thought it was going to be a 911 call to Ashland PD, but they were able to stop. I think if we had just a little bit of, in between Plan A and Plan B, that could help reduce that, as well as signage of sharp curb, maybe take it where we put in speed bumps as such as well. So if we could do a mix of the two, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Engler, can I ask you a question perhaps before we get the opinion of the other board members? You've heard several people indicate that perhaps something between the 220 and 290 would be, you know, a good compromise from your engineering, design people. Is that something that's doable and still would allow for the full park, or is that not doable from the-
I, I mean, it's-
Logistics?
I, I mean, what's, we have 220, it works, and we were asked to do 290. You're kind of like, you know, it's, we're, we're losing trees, we're losing space, not as much of it. So, and we've spent so much money and time on this issue. I, I don't mean to be frustrated, but we have a plan that works, and now we're being asked to design something else. We showed what you want at 290, and it sounds like people are not supportive of that, which I think is good. But at, at this point, and, and counsel can advise, but under 40B, you cannot ask the applicant to redesign their plan. You can ask them to, you, you opine on what they're providing you. So can we go back and look at it, I, I suppose, but that's, then we get beat up by the Concom for not having filed our notice of intent. Well, we can't file a notice of intent because we haven't finished this, and this affects the compensatory storage. So it seems, I, I sound like a second grader, but it's unfair.
That was a simple answer to my question, sir.
So we can look at it. We can look at it, but, but what, is it 240? Is it 260? I mean, it's not up to us to, you know, say, what's the number? I mean, what's going to satisfy people to feel like 220? Is it, what is it?
I simply asked you a question. Is it possible to design the project somewhere between 220 and 290, and still have sufficient landscaping and-
I would say no.
Nope?
I would say no.
Then that's the answer to my question. We didn't know, didn't need to go bring up Concom or anything else. We didn't know, didn't need to go bring up Concom or anything else. You know, that's a sore subject. I know it's a sore subject for you, and we don't enjoy hearing about it. So let's move on to something else.
Okay, fair point.
Okay, board members, let's take a sort of a straw poll, your thoughts on, on the, the two twenty, two ninety sight distance?
I had a question for Bob first.
Oh, sure.
Bob, what, how long does it take a car to stop at the posted speed limit on that?
Posted, less than two hundred feet, but there's a proportion of drivers that go faster than the posted speed. And that's what we're designing to, and that's what the industry standard calls for. It's called the eighty-fifth percentile speed. What that means, at two hundred feet, that's, that's the distance at which someone traveling faster than the speed limit, I didn't say they're.
Five percent.
Right? They are coming around the corner and they realize there's a dump truck there, as someone just pointed out. They're, they need to perceive and react to that, and then, once they hit the brake, be able to come to a complete stop before striking that vehicle. That's, that, that's the standard that we're trying to design to, and that's precisely what I think happened recently in that example. So that's, that's a standard that's being met under the current design at two hundred feet. At exactly two hundred feet, that car, the bumper comes right up against the, the side of that vehicle, but doesn't strike it. At two hundred and twenty feet, that provides a full car length of buffer, if you will, so that if someone is coming around a corner and they need to react quickly, and the road, and this is important, and the road is, is wet, right, and there's a certain friction associated with that, or lack thereof, that they can reasonably come to a stop and not exactly come to the side panel of the car, right? So.
So I just got one, so there was mention of an almost accident recently, but is the sightline two twenty today?
It is not.
Okay, so that accident, really, that potential, that almost accident, really doesn't matter because they were able to avoid it without the two hundred.
Yeah, and I don't know how fast that approaching car was going. They might have been going the speed limit. They might have gone below the speed limit. So we don't know those factors.
Right.
But what we're designing for in this instance is someone who is going faster than the speed limit. Under those conditions, would, would be able to stop before causing damage.
So at the last meeting about this, someone brought up that if a fully loaded pumper fire truck is coming around the corner, what's, what's their?
Yeah. It's a bit different because the driver's eye position is different in a larger vehicle than it is in a passenger car. If you're in a tanker vehicle or a fire apparatus, your eye height is at somewhere around eight feet in the air, right? Where a motorist and a passenger vehicle's eye height is at three and a half feet. So someone in a larger vehicle like that would most likely be able to see over the wall that is causing the impediment for a passenger vehicle, right? So there, there are different standards. The standard that's applied here is the one that's more critical in terms of length, right? The, the passenger car length, because the driver's eye position is at a lower level, right? As opposed to higher level for, for a larger vehicle. So the two hundred and twenty feet, or the two hundred foot minimum standard is based on passenger car standards. If you conducted an exercise where a tanker truck were the design vehicle, you'd probably have a longer sightline because of the higher eye position, and hence longer sightline under those circumstances.
So you don't need a longer sightline, you just have one because that vehicle's bigger?
Correct.
So it's kind of not really too much of a concern that a pumper truck's gonna come around the corner and?
Well, it's always a concern, but the question becomes, you know, is that approaching vehicle gonna have sufficient visibility to someone who might pull out of the driveway, right? And the, the answer is yes, that they will. And I think what's being debated now is whether or not it's better to have a longer distance. And, and the answer is yes, certainly. If you can get a longer sightline, that's, that's better from, from, from the perspective of, and I, and I said this earlier, comfort, comfort level. You can more easily come to a stop at a greater dis, you know, greater distance if you have longer sightline. But, you know, in terms of, this becomes subjective in that the two hundred and twenty feet is more than what's required at a minimum level. I, I think it's comfortably more, frankly. It's a full car length more. And it's really a subjective discussion, which is beyond my purview, as to whether or not it's better to have more park or less park versus a comfort level of having more sightline.
Okay, that, that was my question. Thank you very much.
Let me start off, and I think we've obviously heard a lot about both sight distances. You know, my perspective is this is a project that's going to be smack downtown. Landscaping and public amenities, I think, are very important for this project. So the rest of the effect on the town isn't quite as perhaps harsh as just an apartment residence. The two hundred and twenty sight distance, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Mishaw, provides more than the minimum. In fact, if my math is correct, it's ten percent more than the minimum. It allows for a, a full pocket park, which is a public amenity that can be used not only for people going to the restaurant that's supposed to be there, but also other members of the public who may wish to avail themselves of it. But it also allows for more landscaping, more trees. We've heard Mr. Angler mention that trees would have to be eliminated to go up to the two hundred and ninety sight distance. And I think going with the two hundred and twenty sight distance, allowing for that design is a fair compromise, as it were, to allow the public to be able to access part of this project without visiting the restaurant, although certainly they could visit the restaurant. And it would just make for a better visual, visual look, and that the safety to the public is not going to be sufficiently diminished by making that decision. I mean, I suppose if you designed something that had a four hundred foot sight distance, it would be even safer. But, you know, that's, that's not realistic, obviously, and I was being facetious, and I probably shouldn't have been. But, you know, I, I would vote. Again, we're not taking a formal vote, it's just to, to give the developers some guidance and what, what we're looking at going forward would be to, to go with Plan A. Brian, your thoughts?
I agree. I like Plan A better. It's, it's more than the minimum safety. And in order to keep what they've created, I, I think two twenty is the way to go.
Okay. Dan, your thoughts?
I'd agree with Plan A, but I would add that I do feel this is a point on Myrtle Street where, you know, you're gonna have vehicles accelerating. And so, you know, from my perspective, I think reducing the acceleration point, you know, kind of right at the exit, whether that be through a speed bump or potentially a crosswalk. You do have the park on the northwest side over there, so you, you may be having a lot of pedestrian traffic from here, traveling that way. But just trying to maintain slower vehicle speeds as a different approach to keeping this safe. Because again, I, I think you're gonna have a lot of vehicles hitting the gas and accelerating, where you may want them to kind of be hitting the brakes a little bit longer until they get, get through that area.
But Plan A would be your.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with Plan A, but I, I do think, you know, other approaches to try and reduce that speed would be worth considering.
Stu, your thoughts?
I would vote for Plan B.
Okay. Ryan?
I would absolutely favor Plan A. I, I think the, the entire flavor of the project would be changed greatly by going to Plan B, based on the renderings that were provided.
Okay, thank you. Well, there you go. Much like the public, it's not unanimous. But I think from what I've heard from my fellow board members is that our preference would be for the Plan A design, and perhaps we can work on some issues that signage or whatever that might.
Sure.
Might help with the potential safety concerns.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The direction was helpful. I can now direct Bowler to complete the civil engineering packet, and we can begin preparing our notice of intent. And also, mostly for the benefit of the public, but, you know, I presume Mr. Mishaw and Mr. Benedetto and, and any peer review consultant will opine on things that should be in a decision relative to signage or other things like that. So this isn't the last bite of the apple. So if there are some things like that that come up, you know, we'll be all collectively discussing those. So I think that's important. But we will move forward under the presumption that it seems like the, the two twenty plan, if you will, is more universally preferred than the alternative.
Okay, couple of other issues to, I think, discuss, and I believe they were. Two of them had, have to do sort of with, with traffic. And one was at about the time of our last meeting, the Ashland had received a notice from the state concerning safety issues with the Myrtle Street Bridge. I know you've responded to, to that. I would suggest we table that issue to, we get some clarification from the, the town DPW as far as what exactly is being proposed for the bridge. And then discussing further with you, your suggestion and your response, rather than go into a detailed back and forth tonight, which frankly, I'm not prepared to do.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, that sounds great. I mean, as you know, when you guys first introduced that, I thought I was gonna be opening up a PDF with a two hundred page, I mean, it was one paragraph. And I, I mean, you know, so we're aware of it, we'll, you know, entertain the conversation. But as, I mean, I, I think our response stands on its own. It's really a kind of more of a global town thing. I, I think it impacts us no more, no less maybe than other users in downtown. And we'll be happy to talk about it when some of the details are, because it wasn't clear to us, like, what is being done? When is it being done? Who's responding? Any of that, so.
We are still, I think, wait, working through it. I'm sure the DPW, I think, is working through it, and I think probably safe to say that no entity in town really has a plan at this point about how to respond to this and what may or may not need to be done and the effect, if any, on, on traffic. And the information has been provided to Mr. Mishaw, but there isn't really a, I think, a repaired response as far as that is concerned. The other sort of traffic item that came up tangentially was that the town had received information from the most recent MBTA commuter rail community meeting that, beginning in a couple of years, the MBTA is planning to increase the number of trains that run through the Metro West area, Framingham and Ashland, basically doubling the number from one train per hour to one train every half hour. And the question had been asked whether that would require any change in our traffic studies that had been done for this development. We've asked Mr. Mishaw to opine on that, and if you could, could do that.
Sure. So I want to be clear that whether the trains are doubled or not through the downtown area, that the relative impact of this project remains as reported in, in the submitted studies. So to put this in, in context, the, the majority of traffic that this site would generate would actually not be through the downtown area. It would be along Myrtle Street, potentially Pine Hill, which we asked the applicant to study, and they did. Small percentage of trips may use that roadway, or Pleasant Street. The number of trips through the downtown area that have been documented are less than twenty per hour. And that's two-way. That's, that's both inbound and outbound for this project. That's representing a very small change that is inconsequential to the level of delay or queuing that occurs in the downtown area. They've quantified it appropriately in their studies. So it's a de minimis impact. It's, it's measurable, but it's, it's not going to be perceptible to someone who's standing on a street corner. They're not gonna, you know, assuming the project gets built and they were able to compare apples to apples before and after, they're not gonna be able to determine a real difference between the two. Now, it's not to say that doubling trains won't have an impact. It will. The, the downtown signals are designed as what are known as adaptive traffic signals. What that means is that when gates come down to allow a train to, to pass, it's going to create a long delay in, in queuing, which people are well aware of today when it happens. And it will take the signal several cycles to catch up, if you will, to reduce that vehicle queuing in the downtown. With the doubling of traffic, that catch-up process is gonna take longer. It's gonna happen more frequently. So the experience that people will have if they have to travel through the downtown area will, will be directly influenced by having more trains and more congestion and more queuing as a result. Not as a result of this project, but as a result of the increase in frequency of those trains and the need for the signals to catch up, right? So this project, whether or not those trains double, will have the same level of impact. And that impact, which is well quantified in the reports in accordance with the industry standards and based on our review, indicate that there's very little change in the amount of queuing or delay that would result from their project traffic.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say, why don't we have members of the board ask any questions on this issue to Mr. Mishaw? And then, but why don't we do that?
Yes. If the MBTA doubles the amount of trains coming through town, won't that mean there's less cars?
One would hope that the reason that they're doubling the train capacity is because ridership is, is increasing, and they're trying to facilitate and incentivize people using that mode, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I was just curious if you had any knowledge of pre-COVID and what the trips were, and then what doubling would be? Would that be an excessive pre-COVID trips?
Is your, is your question related to the number of riders on the train or the traffic?
The, the MBTA commuter rail trips per day. You know, my thought is post-COVID, there is a less of a need for those trips. So would doubling it bring us to a higher level than we were in, say, two thousand and nineteen?
Well, I, I think COVID certainly influenced how many people were using public transportation. And in the case of train service, ridership went down substantially. It has substantially recovered since, because we're far enough beyond the COVID period where people feel more comfortable using that mode of transportation. My own family members use this exact line to get to Boston every day. So I know if you don't get on that train, you know, before Framingham, you could be in standing room, right? And I think the premise here is that, you know, the MBTA would like to enhance and incentivize, I call it incentivize people using that mode by making it comfortable, you know, you. I call it incentivize, people using that mode by making it comfortable. You know, you can actually get a seat. You don't have to worry about standing room. I, for years, used the T to get into my job in Boston on Long Wharf. And I was fortunate enough to be the last stop before I had to stand. But certainly, I think, over time, the idea is that ridership is increasing, will continue to increase, and that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Stu, any questions on this?
No, sir.
And Ryan, how about you?
No questions on this either.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. And we will, I think, wait until we reach the end of the this applicant's presentation tonight before we open it up for any further public comment on on any of the issues. That's all right. And lastly, I think we were going to talk about signage tonight, weren't we? I know you submitted a.
I mean, we certainly can, Mr. Chairman. We submitted, you know, a draft package. As I said in the cover memo, I would direct the board's attention more to the sign locations and type than what's actually on them, because we have, you know, we don't, I think it'll be the sanctuary at Ashland Mills, but I don't know that for certain. But I, we don't have a logo, we don't have color scheme, et cetera. But what we tried to do is show you at this point in time, our thinking of where we would put the signs, which is one kind of in the in the number one. I don't know if I have control. Yep, somebody's helping me out. Right there would be a monument sign. And then we would have an eyebrow sign over the front door. And then we would have a similar monument sign, number three, to the Myrtle Street entrance. And then we're, have not really yet designed that facade of the restaurant. So it's a little premature for us to say where exactly probably would be the best location for that sign, whether it's on the little bump out or the long facade. We showed both in our in our package. But I think the objective, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, was to identify both the type of sign that we envision as well as the location. We certainly have time to modify those, but that's was our best foot forward at this point in time.
Let me let me suggest this perhaps. It's my understanding that in the not-too-distant future, we may be facing a presentation, facing is not the right word, that sounds oppositional, but we might be having a presentation on some building designs that are being worked on.
That's correct.
And my understanding is, is that fairly close to agreement?
It will be submitted by before the next hearing, yes.
Which would be delightful. And perhaps as part of that, we would also take up signage locations, et cetera. It may make more sense than talking about it extensively tonight.
Mr. Chairman, you're as wise as you are handsome. I think that's a great idea.
I've been told I'm ugly, so I'm not sure that's such a good comment.
Well, so anyway, in all ser-
But we don't need to go down that road.
In all seriousness, I think it would be better to do it in that context
Okay, that's fine.
because the signage would mean more, rather than to look at it in a vacuum.
Okay.
And the buildings are have are changing fairly significantly. So we can table that and just do it all together.
Okay, that would be fine. Oh, sure.
As you want to emphasize, you know, I think, kind of speaking on behalf of the public, you know, just taking into consideration the development of this area and, you know, incorporating that into your design, whether it be through materials, you know, color schemes and things like that. But, you know, I think conforming this to that area would be, you know, very much appreciated.
No, we appreciate that. And I think you'll see what gets submitted is substantially different than what was originally submitted and and is and is based on input from architects in Ashland, so.
Okay, I think that concludes what we needed to or were planning to discuss tonight tonight. And before we go on to scheduling our next meeting and subjects of our next meeting, I had offered the public an opportunity to ask questions. If anybody does wish to ask a question, please either raise your hand on Zoom or step up to the podium. We have one person up to the podium now. So why don't we start with you, sir?
Paul Kendall, 6 Rebenaker Road. So related to the trains and more of those, and forgive me if this has been addressed earlier, are the, is the light at Pleasant Street going to be programmatically changed? Because even right now, it backs up and it doesn't clear. And I'll go into another issue with that intersection after this. But is that part of, part of this project is going to be looking at reprogramming that?
The short answer is no, that that's not part of the project. But the town has recently implemented new traffic signal controllers that are, they have a technology that allows the signals to adjust themselves based on how much traffic is on the roadways during any time of the day. So they're adaptive signals. Those signals are going to increase the cycle length or reduce the cycle length depending on need. And it just, it doesn't happen instantaneously. It happens over a number of cycles. So the same system is used in downtown Framingham. That was implemented probably about seven or eight years ago.
I don't think that's a good, good thing to reference.
Seven or eight years ago, it was implemented. It was a bear to get those to work properly, too. But there, the town is now in the process of fine tuning those adaptive controls. That's a process that's separate from this project.
Yeah, I understand it wouldn't be the applicant, but I, whether that was part of the, you know, the town looking at this and the impacts, right?
Yep.
Because, I mean, I'll just be playing about the traffic patterns during rush hour in the morning. Pleasant Street's no-go. There is zero possibility that anyone leaving this is going to use Pleasant Street. That right-hand turn onto Main Street, you're not getting to Pleasant Street. That's, if somebody's trying to do that, that's the most dangerous thing you could do. That's ridiculous. Turning left on Myrtle to get down there, right now, there are parking spots in that right-hand lane. If there's more than two or three cars queued at that light, you're not turning right. You have to wait until that. So that is going to queue up for a long way. There is no way anyone in the morning is, I don't know that there's a solution aside from removing those those parking spots or making them not be able to be used at that time. But that's going to be impactful to, there's a business right there and things like that. So what that's, what that means is, I know you said that they studied Pine Hill, but was it studied with this intent? Because they're not going to do that. And if they're going west, because I do this in the morning, right? So I, I live over by the high school and I cut over Raymond Marchetti and down to avoid that. And I can tell you that if there's more than two cars there, you can't turn right. You can't get into the turn lane, right? Because there's parking spots and things there. So that's going to be a no-go. They are going to use, if they're going west, they are absolutely going to go up Pine Hill to Sudbury to Winter Street. That is going to be the default if they're going to go that direction. Now, they might, instead of going that direction, choose to go Myrtle to 9 to 495 as opposed to the standard way that people go now, 495. That may occur. But Pleasant Street's a no-go in the morning. There's no way anyone from this project during rush hour is going to try somehow to get to Pleasant. They are going to take another route. Because I can tell you in the morning that, like I said, I don't know that there's a solution aside from somehow widening that so you can have more of a turn lane. If there was more queuing to turn right, more ability to get there, that would work, that would help that situation. But I, there's a, for me, there's a big concern about that. Like I said, I don't know that, and please take this for what it is, constructive. You know, I'm not one of the people that, hey, no, don't, don't do this, don't do that. It's not contentious. This is, I experienced this in the morning anyway. I avoid coming downtown and I try to do that. And I can tell you, I've, I've waited through a full light cycle, even when there's only three cars ahead of me, because I can't turn right. And we're going to be adding significant traffic there in the morning. So I don't know the solution for that. Perhaps there's a bit of ability to take a couple of those parking spots and say, hey, not before nine o'clock or whatever in the morning. But again, that's impactful to the business. So I don't want to recommend that, not knowing what the impact to the, to the businesses there are. But I can just tell you that your default two ways out are going to be Myrtle Street over to Route 9 that way, or they're going to take Pine Hill Road. So I don't know what that restudy of that area included, but whatever you were going to have in rush hour to Pleasant has to, you have to say it's going to go to to Pine Hill. There's just no way that's going to occur. This is from experience, right? And that's in current, current situation, so.
Thank you. Becca, anybody online? Okay, why don't we invite them in? Oh, nobody, I'm sorry. My hearing aid must, batteries must have died. I apologize. Sir, next, you're next then.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Alex Keefe from Pine Hill Road. I cannot agree more with the gentleman who just stood up here and discussed that the influx in vehicles that are going to travel up Pine Hill Road is going to be far more than what the road is built for, just because of the narrow angles that are on it. It's come up before. I've spoken about it time and time again, about the issues of the Myrtle Street entry and exit way that exist. I speak as a former law enforcement officer of Ashland that went to motor vehicle crashes. I could tell you the average speed is 43 coming down Myrtle Street from the hundreds of motor vehicles I've stopped over there. I could tell you it's a blind corner. And every time that it gets brought up, the discussion of why didn't the developer look at aligning the main entry and exit with the traffic lights, it was brought up by town council this past time, it was brought up by me, it's brought, been brought up by the fire chief, it's been brought up by members of the traffic safety team, and it's been brought up by members of the public time and time again. The responses that I reviewed and what was submitted and going back, I believe it was the March 2025 review, listed six points. The points had to do with that if they were to move the intersection or to align with the lights, as a previous developer had put a plan and proposed for, would mean that they'd have to duplicate fire suppression systems, they'd have to duplicate trash pickups, there would have to be the construction of a retaining wall amongst a couple of other things. Looking at that and comparing it to the safety that it would provide, allowing the traffic lights to do what they've been designed to do, is something that I know a lot of people, including myself, have been pushing. So my two-part question, Mr. Chair, tonight is, time and time again, we bring it up, time and time again, it's, okay, thank you, move on to the next person in line. My two-part question is, can the board provide their official opinion tonight of would aligning this with the traffic lights help reduce traffic flow on Pine Hill, help with the minimal standards that have been listed tonight with 220-foot curves, minimal standards of fire apparatus turning? And my second question would be through you to the MDM consultant. If we did ask the developer, and I know the horse is out of the barn quite a ways on this, but if we were to align the main entry and exit with the traffic lights, which was previously proposed from the first meeting on, would this solve a majority of the problems that have been discussed tonight and in previous meetings where, as Mr. Angler stated earlier, you know, he's getting frustrated. I know there are people in the community that would like to know the board's official opinion and MDM's official opinion of would this help solve a majority of the problems that have been discussed meeting after meeting, instead of it being dismissed?
Well, before we get there, the board is not going to be giving any advisory opinions tonight. But it's my understanding that the ZBA cannot require the applicant to redesign their project in a manner in which we want them to do. So if we wanted them to realign the entrance with Pleasant Street, and they say, no, we're not going to do that, this is the plan we're presenting, and we filed a decision denying the project or approving the project, but only with the main entrance aligning with Pleasant Street, the developer would appeal that to the housing agency and our decision would be reversed. Is that an accurate statement? Or have I misstated the law, which if I did, would not be the first time?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, in some ways, maybe a couple of clarifications on some of the points you made. I think you can ask any question you want to ask of your peer reviewer or the applicant. And if there's a concern you have, particularly one that's based on, you know, public safety elements of the project, traffic-related public safety elements of the project, then it's a fair question to be asked. If the applicant has said, no, we're not interested in that, or there's some design obstacles to doing that, and let me explain. And so ultimately, the answer is, we've looked at it and we're not interested. And you've had the same conversation with your peer review consultant on that topic. And the conclusion has been, whatever it's been, then that may be the end of the road of that conversation. What you can't, what you'd be going out on much thinner ice to say would be, well, we want it anyway, and we want you to consider it anyway. Because that would put the applicant in the position of having to determine whether or not to capitulate to that, or just challenge that condition if you imposed it. And if they, like you said earlier, if they appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee on that, we would have a burden to to show that that was either, you know, consistent or inconsistent with local needs. And the HAC could strike that, among other things. It puts your entire decision in play if there was an appeal to the HAC. Whatever conditions the applicant wasn't satisfied with would be things that the HAC could consider striking. So you lose a certain quantum of control over the process at that point. So it's not as simple as they would reverse it. There's more of a process to it around that. But the conversation can be had here, like on all these other topics that we've discussed this evening and other evenings, where there's a back and forth. You ask the questions, you get the answers, and then the board decides, based on that answer, whether to press it forward or not. And so this is like all of those other conversations the board has had. And so if, maybe between this meeting and the next meeting, if you refresh your memories on that conversation and what you received from from your peer reviewer, what the applicant's response to that question was, you can come back and then decide whether or not the board thinks there's a good basis for pursuing that further, or if that's been exhausted already. And so that would be my suggestion to the board.
Well, we've had many meetings where we've discussed traffic and the design and the driveway designs. We're pretty far down the road on that. And I don't think we're going to go back and revisit that again.
Okay, I appreciate it. Just for the record, though, it was brought up in the preliminary stages, so.
By a number of people at a number of different meetings. Out of all those meeting dates I referenced at the start of this hearing, I would say at least the first half of those dealt exclusively with traffic getting in and out of the project and how it does that. And I know when a previous owner filed before the planning board for a project, not a 40B, but what their plan was, was to have the entrance aligned with Pleasant Street, that project did not go forward for whatever reason. And this applicant took the project, developed it in a different way. And that's what we've been dealing with. We've had the peer reviews on traffic right from the very beginning. And we've worked with that. And I don't sense a sense on the board that we're going to start from square one again.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just want to add that, you know, MDM has done a great job with their process and looking at. So a shout out to him. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your comments. Mr. Tesoni, you're the last public commenter. And please make it brief. The evening is late and I'm getting hungry.
And I only have a three-minute walk away. Okay, Mark Tesoni, 119 Main Street. First of, first of all, would be the, if you want to make, if was to make an entrance across from Pleasant Street, there had to be another curb cut to make that entrance. One, that's one. And queuing of the traffic, when you come from the Ashland-Framingham Town Line, there's own, you get up to the first light, which is at Pleasant Street, Main Street, that intersection. So this traffic behind coming off, coming off, you said, I'm- So there's traffic behind coming off, coming off East Alman Road, Route nine, Temple, whatever it is in Framingham. So when you get down to the, to the train, to the, the crossing, and it's got to be more trains in a couple of years, years coming down, every train, I hear it every single day, all I, Ashland House, I hear it, every maybe 15, 20 minutes to a half hour, there's a train going by. And you, combined the train crossing there and at Cherry Street, there's, there's a total of about 20 cars is being stopped. Main Street has, where I can see, easy a dozen cars going up from in front of the town hall here down to the crossing and then down the street, some, Summer Street, it's about eight to maybe 10 more that has to stop at the corner. So I'm, I'm looking at it as the queue, the queuing is part, is part of the problem, yes. But traffic would never become a easy thing to do, but it's also not going to make things tougher. But my last, my last comment here, but traffic will be traffic, no matter if it's light or heavy.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Angler, why don't you come to the podium and we'll talk about where we go from, from here. I know our next meeting is scheduled for July 8th. I, I have heard through the grapevine that you may not be available on July 8th, but I don't know whether that would impact our ability to, to proceed. I mean, from my perspective, we received a short time ago our peer review from Haley and Ward on water and sewer. I know you prepared a response, which raised a couple of questions that I want Haley and Ward to opine on, to give the board a sense of the importance of, of what they're suggesting and what you had suggested in your response was not necessary. And then we have the building issue, and it sounds like that may be some meeting-
Main architecture.
The architecture issue, yeah, that you should, should be at. So I guess I turn it over to you.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman-
July 8th or July?
Well, I, I think the discussion with Counselor Mead was, I mean, I, listen, I'm the applicant. I don't feel particularly awesome to have a public hearing that I'm not attending and I'm going to be out of the country on the 8th. That's one of the reasons I gave, you know, the extension into September. So if we could just continue to the 22nd, we'll, we'll do Haley Ward that night, we'll do, the architecture will be submitted well before that and give you guys a chance to chew it over. We'll bring our architectural team on the 22nd, we'll do a full presentation. Our Eric, you know, and Bowler will be here to talk water sewer in anticipation of Haley Ward. So I think we can bang all that out on the 22nd.
22nd? I think, I get a sense that the board would have no problems with continuing it for an extra meeting to the 22nd. We'd still have several meetings after that if needed to-
So that would be preferable, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else we need to talk about before we vote on continuing the matter?
I don't think so. I know Mr. Michio would probably like to come back for another meeting or two before we conclude, so, no, just, I'm sorry. No, there is nothing else, so.
Okay, good. That's all right, it's on your dime. Someone like to make a motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, July 22nd? 2025 at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. This hearing is continued until Tuesday, July 22nd at 7:00 PM. And thank you all very much. Going forward, we thank our peer reviewers for-
Thanks, guys.
-being here at the meeting tonight. We have another item on the agenda, which is to approve the meeting minutes for May 27th, 2025. A lengthy meeting, once again, the minutes were submitted as part of the meeting package last week. Any questions or proposed changes? Becca, did anybody receive? Everybody all set with the minutes?
Yes.
If so, is someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the May 27th, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you all very much. Next item, staff updates and administrative matters. As I indicated previously, we were joined or are joined this evening by Jasmine Farinachi, the Director of Planning and Economic Development. This is her second day on the job, I believe. So we thank her for being with us and we look forward to working with her going forward. And I'm also pleased to report that an assistant town planner has been hired, Melissa Adams. Today was her first day on the job, so thus she was not at tonight's meeting, she got the night off, but she will be working with the planning, with the ZBA as well. And I guess that all. Becca, you're going to continue to be involved with us for a while at least before you go back full-time to your conservation agent position or? Okay, excellent, good, good to know. Any questions or anything from anybody? No? No? Okay, excellent. Counsel, any, anything to add other than nothing further from May? Good. Then how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second the motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Becca. We appreciate your cooperation and thank you for the members of the public that attended.